I'm Jeff. You're welcome. I recognize all of our faces in here. So that's who appreciate you being here tonight. We talked a couple of months back about offering a coffee talk, which there is coffee, there is water, there are cookies that are out, so help yourself to any of those I have. Come on in, come on down. So yeah, we want to use this evening for two purposes. The first purpose is for us to give you an overview. Some additional information, the new information, more so an overview of where we've gotten through this budget process in preparation for for next year. So share some information about that. And then the second half will be just open dialogue. This is not, we don't have the resources lined up. We're just going to pass the mic around and we can have some open conversation. And it's about the budget, work to answer some questions. And we have exactly until the 7th. When the board will retreat into the meeting room for a special meeting to continue discussions and integrations on next year's budget. There will be public comment at that meeting at the end of the meeting. So we want to allow people to hear the board and have some conversations. And then public comment at the end, if you want to stay, you're welcome to. There'll be a sign up sheet like we did last time. We'll also have overflow in the auditorium because we only have 40 people. We need a real fire person. So with that being said, let me thank our Board of Education members for being here. We have a few here, and we're supposed to be joining us a little bit later on. We have some Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance members here as well. So thank you for joining us. We appreciate that for being with us this evening. So I'm going to turn it over to the Chairman, Board of Education, Eric Bateman. Eric, soon to start us off with the first slide and discussion on the timeline of events. And I'll take over from there, share more information, and then we'll open up to some open dialogue. And that's what this is. And again, feel free to move around if you want to get a cup of coffee, water, cookies, apples, please help yourself. Okay. All right. Mr. Brown?
Thanks, Jeff. Thanks, everyone, for coming. Really appreciate it. We had a lot of people come over the past few Mondays, and it really does help us a lot. Like, as a board event, we see people stopping shop. We see people hitting emails, and we see people hearing and seeing everybody come and getting all that feedback helps us. Like, we're trying to figure out what's best for the district and what's best for the town. And getting feedback from a whole bunch of people really helps us in kind of our framing of what's best and what we should move forward with. But we thought what would be helpful is just to give a little history of like how we got here, because I think we all probably stepped in at different points. And it's good to see this is a somewhat normal budget process and want to go through and kind of how we get here and what the important points are. So first, the first thing that we did maybe five, six, seven years ago is we put in these first couple of meetings, which are budget workshops. And what's important for that is just for Jeff and his team bring forward and say, what's the budget look like if we roll everything over, everything stays, keep all the programs, keep everything, like what's, what kind of budget do we need? What kind of things maybe do we want to introduce that might be new in a given year? What challenges are we facing? And it's not decisions made, but it gives the Board of Ed a background and kind of understanding to Board of Finance members, some attend as well if they ask questions. Just give a nice open forum for us to start learning and educating ourselves of what the following year looks like. And this year, very different than previous years, when we rolled everything up, the first number was 10.3%, which 10.3% for, you know, speaking for myself and part of the Board of Ed as well, you know, we, you know, it's kind of fall off your chair like, holy cow, that's a big number. What are, what are we going to do with that? So we gave some feedback to Jeff, just saying, wow, that's a big number. We didn't say, Jeff, we need to hit a certain number or anything like that. It's just, that's a big number, you know. So Jeff worked with his team and the acting team and thank everybody, thank all of them for working really hard. And during, you know, when Jeff came and the team came to present January 9th, they came with a proposed increase of 6.97. And the 6.97% increase included 18 and a half roles were being reduced. And 6.97, just to give context, is the biggest number Jeff has ever submitted. And it's, I've only, I've been on board eight years. It's the biggest number I've seen. We have some members who've been on longer, maybe the biggest in a long time, I don't want to say in history, but it's, it's a large, it's a big number for us to kind of grapple with and understand. So then, now we might have started having our discussions, and this is where I think a lot of people, you start hearing what's going on and people giving us feedback, and that's what's important. That next step is where we start getting hearing information, hearing from our town, hearing from parents, teachers, students, staff, and understand the impact and what their viewpoints are. And that gave us then the next, it's like eight Mondays, but I guess it's been like two or three Mondays straight of really having the chance for us to dig in and really understand and come up with what are the implications and are we comfortable with the implications of trying to get to 6.97, which was high, and are we comfortable with that? And I think what you kind of heard is, you know, that sounded pretty challenging. And I don't think, again, I can't, I don't want to speak on behalf of the board or anything like that yet, but, you know, I think we heard what we said, which was, wow, that, that's, those are big implications to our district. And so that's kind of where we got to last Monday. Got to last Monday. And now we're, what we, why we wanted to have this next meeting, the meeting today, is we want to do two things. One is, we wanted, you know, with public comment, it's, public comment is one way. You get up, you get up, you have three minutes to give us your feedback. We can only, we can't respond. So we can only listen in the ear, take your feedback, and then you can listen to our discussion, and it influences our discussion, but we can't interact. So we wanted to have this opportunity, and we found this having an opportunity to actually interact. So if people have questions, if you can ask questions, we can actually provide answers and interact for the next hour or 45 minutes or so. And then we're going to continue our budget discussion. And then we do a public comment at the end, because we did want to give a chance after we hear from you, we go through the, our budget discussions for you to give comment if you want to, if you have another opportunity to give a comment. And then as we fast forward to the 27th, that's where we'll have our public hearing, which I think in the auditorium, in the auditorium, we'll have the public hearing. And that's where another chance to get feedback from the public. And then after that, that's typically where we'll have our Board of Ed meeting to adopt the budget, just then send that to the Board of Science and Board of Finance. And then that process, I think it's March 28th, is the date for our presentation with Board of Finance. So kind of just so you understand the process and what's going to happen. So that's how we got here, and that's where we're headed. And then I'd like to turn it back to Jeff, who's going to kind of give some of the details on where we are.
Thanks, Eric. So, um, yeah, Chairman Bateman said, you know, this has been one of those challenging budgets that I might take you as a superintendent. 10.30, as we looked at that December 16th workshop, December 16th feels like so long ago, you know, two, two months ago. We all kind of question, this is extremely hot. Worked to, to bring this to that. And so as you come in, the budget's around 5%. So there's where we, in our thinking, I demonstrated it was to try and find a happy meeting here. That comes with costs, nothing that we want to see happen. We don't want positions to be gone, that's for sure. This is what we're, we're working through, we're trying to find out where this budget should be. For most of you, as I'm looking around the group, have already seen and heard the information about the drivers of that original 10.3 and the multiple was 6.97. And that's, these three items, salaries, we always have salaries go over to salaries and contracts, benefits, and operating expenses. The benefit side of things, for anybody who hasn't heard us kind of talk about this, you know, health insurance has really gone through the roof. We were not expecting a 10.5% increase this year, and we were told to plan on what was 9% to 12% when we were setting up our budget. It's since backed down to a recommended 8% to 10% from the state, 8% to 10% increase over the current this week here. So right now, it's still a place over 12%. But that is 47% for, you know, 1.7 million of the overall, just the increase. That also includes, not just the 12%, it also includes the fact that we have a number of people that have had babies, staff members that have had babies, have been building families, and have gone from single to two-person to a family plan. And a family insurance plan is $30,000 per family. So, you know, it's, it's great that we're having babies and having families and family, but there's a cost with that, like with our insurance. The operating expense side of things, still with inflation, we've said we've all felt it at the grocery store, we've seen it in our homes. We have 700,000 square feet of building space, and we have heating, cooling, fuel, oil, et cetera, of our home. So there was additional costs associated with that. Just an increase in energy costs alone, almost $400,000. And just to give you perspective, again, as I said before, we look at 1% of our budget for the increase, 1% increase is roughly $540,000. So you can kind of do the math and, you know, how we've climbed with the ladder with the budget increase. So planned operations, those aren't going to go away, those are going to continue in course. So that's one of our integrations. And if we didn't have those items, and we backed out, let's say that insurance was a 6% increase, let's say that inflation, you know, was down, minimum wage as well, all of that, the savings were, or if those issues were not present, we're sitting at a 6.97, we'd have been at 5.27, which obviously we would then, you know, not be cutting positions or recommending, you know, those cuts and positions. So these things are possible, is our message. Fixed expenses, we said it before, 96, 97% of any operating, school operating budget is focused on fixed expenses. And that's a big part of it. You can't move contracts, contracts are what they are, generally, three-year agreements with all of our units. So salaries, 6% of that, employee benefits, institution transportation, you know, busing contract, that was a very, that was like 5%, the busing transportation contract this year is 5%. 4% of the, so 4%, but, you know, it represents hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. So only slipper, and we hate to keep attacking this, supplies, textbooks, and so on. We need those things. And also, you know, we always hit Dr. Lund in the facilities area, projects, cutting projects, can't keep doing that. It's the things that need to stay, you know, within our budget, because we keep kicking it can down the road. And, you know, our buildings, this building itself, there's doors that either 50 years old here, have been replaced, things need to be fixed and, rooftop units, et cetera. So all of that is. So when we look at, one of the things we wanted to share, because this has come up a lot, our enrollment elementary goal, this has been a big topic of discussion here, we use, we have our guidelines. So we wanted to just run through a couple of scenarios. This is something that the Board of Ed will talk about further when we get into it a little bit. Well, the, when we looked at the class sizes, and if you've got a sheet in front of you, if you want to pass it around, you've seen this before though, too. And by the way, anybody, all this information is on the website, too. So if you want to go after this meeting or tomorrow, or everything that we have shown and discussed is all on the website. So please go and you can see that information. These were our class sizes and what we were looking at with the reduction of four elementary positions. So Nynex Center was the one outlier, third grade, 22.5, that was in both the guidelines. Lilly Beane, you need to continue, and I'll say this time and time again, we've said in the past, you need to work to keep Lilly Beane's numbers lower than the other two schools. They have a different, it's a different animal. There's a lot of needs, all of our special populations, we're beginning to start to work to spread those out, but all those populations, students are at Lilly Beane's school. So the teachers, staff members in those buildings, we're dealing with a different classroom setup, having to bring in, err, bring in students that have specific needs. So we work to keep those class sizes a little bit lower than the other two schools. So those falling within the guidelines. And then Flanders, you know, we had, we know we have a current third grade class going to fourth grade next year is a class that really had some struggles with COVID, just a, it's a grade level that has some significant needs right now. Yeah, so that's something that we paid, tried to pay close attention to as they were preparing for fourth grade next year. So those were what we're looking at for, with the reduction of four staff members, what the numbers will look like. Now, if you just took two positions out, we reduced two FD, two elementary, and put two back in, then we would look to add them to, you know, Nynex Center, that third grade, which would drop third grade numbers down to 50, which would look to be below our guidelines for third grade. It's 18 for the guidelines. And then Flanders, we'd tackle that fourth grade, too, and drop that. Now, this could be flexible as well. I'm not saying, you know, things are a long way before next year, so shifts might happen. Danielle, Jeff O'Brien, Dr. Prentice, might want to, you know, to move these around, to say, but that's what it would look like if you had like two positions back in, they still had two reductions. If you did one FD, one FD reduction, added three positions back in, attack it the same way, Nynex Center, that grade three, drive that 22.5 down to 50, still leaving Lilly Beane alone right now. And then Flanders, probably go get grade one. Because grade one would, it's a little higher, you would drive it down to 14.3, fourth grade to 50. So there's some escalation there, as you can see through the rate goes. Now, if you did no proposed reductions at all, put everything back in, all, all four, and I'm just talking elements, I'm not talking, the tech here is just talking to elementary teachers right now. And you put the, we took them from two from Nynex Center, we took two from Flanders. So we put two back in the Nynex Center. Right now, we would look at K, K would have 11.7, grade three, 50. See the other ones don't change. And then Flanders, first grade, fourth grade, which I just showed previously, that would be four back in. Now, what happens here, though, you can see where's Lilly Beane with the next one. Now, we have a bit of additions. We have Lilly Beane with higher class sizes than the other two schools. So that, that's another issue that we're facing moving this. So we did one final scenario. No proposed reductions, keeping four, but you shift, rather than putting two back in Flanders and two back in the Nynex Center, you take those two and put them into Lilly Beane. So that would leave the same original setup of Nynex Center with addressing grade three, addressing grade four Flanders, then Lilly Beane, you'd be looking at 16 in kindergarten, 13.8, grade one, 16.2, grade two, 16.3, grade three, and 14.4, grade four. Now, I'm not sure if Mr. Cockroost would want to leave that setup, the fourth grade to 14, or it might be some shifting there, but that's where things would have to be. So just to give you kind of a snapshot of what, you know, the Board of Ed and what we're all kind of really talking, you know, about, those are the various scenarios of what could happen in elementary levels. Again, that was kind of a hot line of things. This just gives you a representation of the guidelines. See, K will go up to 18 for the guidelines, grade one up to 18, grade two up to 20, grade three up to 20. I should say 18, 20 is the range, and then grade four, 20 to 22 is the guidelines. Now, those are, I preface, those are guidelines. We have fallen in and out of those over the years, so it's not, it's not something that's set in stone. Obviously, the Board of Ed really works hard, you know, we all work hard to make sure that we're trying to stay, you know, within those, those markers. And, you know, we're working off of a post-COVID here as well, and still needs of students. So I think that all has to factor into looking at, you know, these and those class sizes. And the last piece, and then we can kind of start to look it up and do some questions and ask some dialogues. Mr. Brown went over the calendar of events and schedules, you know, where we're going with the rest of our meeting. So we have tonight to be in the meeting room after this meeting. Bill will be overflow in the auditorium if anyone wants to be here, we'll be here. The next meeting will be the 27th, so we're going to gab. And then on the 27th of February, we'll be in the public hearing in the auditorium. And then we'll find a special meeting with the board, plan to sort out a change of budget at that meeting. And then it will go on to Board Selectmen right away. Then we meet with the Board of Selectmen on the 13th of March, share information for them, and then they pass it on to the Board of Finance. And right now, tentatively, we're looking at March 28th. We're lacking a bit of more financing in that day, I've taken it for the presentation to Board of Finance. And that will happen here, I mean, Mr. Holmes here in Board of Finance's chair, we're going to be here. So we're just working out the location of that 13 year, if we need a larger space, we need to. So March 28th is that day. And then it goes from there on to, you know, Anquon Bay, where we're down meetings and refereeing, ultimately, the refereeing on the 18th. That's, that's really it for sharing information. Again, I want to preface, yeah, there's a lot of, not really new faces, a couple of new faces here, but go out on the website, there is additional presentations, additional information, always have different email, we've got a lot of emails, board members themselves, and we're here to answer questions. And we want to work to get input, we've got a lot of good input, too, some ideas, everything that's come out of, you know, the input that we received from the community and parents. So we appreciate that. Clarity is important, too. You know, there's a lot of rumors that start flying, when you have large masses of individuals talking about the budget. For instance, you know, all of a sudden you're cutting freshman sports. It's, it's an idea. We brought forth, the Board of Ed asked for ideas about, you know, what are some other things that you could be looking at? Sports can always be looked at. It's one that, you know, if really we're struggling with budgets, we can look at sports. We could look at site positions, we can look at anything and everything, add everything. So that's a lot of rumors starting to fly, cutting freshman sports. I mean, we can sit through that, it's just, it's something that is out there just as anything comes. Okay, so I'm going to turn this mic over to Chris. And then if anybody has a question, if you're free to ask, we'll spend the next half hour talking about the budgets. We'll use this mic here. So anybody have a specific question?
Thank you, Mr. New. Do we have to identify ourselves here?
This is, nope, Scott, this is open dialogue.
I want to thank you for putting up the flat size and the information. It's very helpful. But I just want to go back to last week's meeting, and actually, the meeting before that, when teachers, excuse me, when Board of Ed members were very clearly saying that they did not want teacher reductions. I can quote from a couple of people, but I'll let that go. And every standard class size in the Board of Ed is here. But we did leave last meeting with a few points of reflection that I thought we might be hearing from some of the other parts. There was a list of three or four, I would say, projects that was on the table. All others were too long. Do we have any information about how alternate planning or alternate proposals look like in the states?
There's no new proposals right now on projects. We did provide a list of, Dr. Lund provided a priority list of projects. We gave that to the Board of Ed this past week. I'm sure that will come up in discussion, just as the last access, you're right, there was a lot of open discussion. Just providing the scenario so it's clear as to what, what it would look like, the four, three, two, and one is for reductions of those staffs, so everybody is aware. But that will be discussed, you know, tonight at the next meeting. So any questions? Chris, please.
Do I need the mic?
We'll go right there.
So I, Jeff, I've looked at your list you sent out, or that went through the PTA, I looked online. So, you know, as you mentioned, it's 97 roughly percent of the budget is fixed, right? So we're looking at 3% left, right? That's roughly what your chart shows. So, you know, looking at it, in order to make up those 18, like, we can go through the budget, we can go line by line, you're looking at such a tight budget that no matter what you say, unless we, and I'm saying this because the Board of Finance is here, and I know they're not at all the meetings, I don't know if they get all the letters that we sent for public comment. But without doing something where we increase the budget to a point that we're now saying we have to cut it back, like, your proposed budget seemed reasonable, and now we're saying we have to cut it back. There, to me, looking at it, I'm not an accountant, I'm not an upper person. But how are you going to get that without making big cuts? I mean, we, as we said last week, we pointed out, and I looked at the budget, I don't have this line by line this year, but I went through the ones from last year. There's very few big ticket items that aren't contracted, set in stone. So without the Board of Finance saying, we need more money in this town, and as my letter to your public comment that you guys probably got today shows, when you look at cost per, you know, net expense per pupil, we are one of the lowest in the area. You look at Old Saver, if they're 22 in the state, we're like 89. So old line is way better than us. A couple of years ago, there are 4,000 more per student spent. So the Board of Finance can look at this and say, we're going to cut our schools, we're going to cut our teachers, we're going to make our schools crappy and not spend as much on the kids, and pull sports, and pull high school activities, pull the eighth grade graduation that the kids don't get anymore. But what are we doing? Like, if the, if the Board of Finance doesn't want to make these schools good, you're going to lose people coming to this town, and you're going to lose them to private schools. So it's not that your budget's bad, it's that we need to say to the town, listen, like, to make this a good system, to make it a good school, and to compete with neighboring towns that are spending more per kid on, more per pupil, we need to do something with our budget. And unfortunately, inflation is everywhere. I mean, you just pointed out, no one in this has seen a budget that high, but we have an inflation of 9.1% since June of '22, except for 1982. And I guarantee you, most of you board members weren't on the board in 1982, because you're not that much older than me, so you're probably 10 years old. And before that, you have to go back to the 70s, before that, you go to the 40s, where you get inflation this high. So things cost, you don't get nothing for free. So you got to look at the inflation, you got to look at the times, and you got to say, listen, the budget's fixed, the only way to make it better and keep the jobs and keep the, the services we need for our students, to keep the sports that we need for keep our kids healthy, emotional, coming off this, is to add money back in, and for the Board of Finance to realize that, and the town to say, listen, we need to make this a town where people want to move, or we have good schools that used to be. And in order to do that, the only way I see, I mean, we can talk for 10 hours about this and go line by line. We're not going to get anywhere with a 97% fixed budget. So I'm just pointing that out because I look at the numbers, and like I said, I'm not a statistician, but Board of Finance who's here has to realize that there's no way we're going to get to where we need to be by going line by line through this budget with 97% fixed costs. And unfortunately, healthcare is one of those that's just going exponentially, as is everything. But we also have to look at inflation. I mean, the highest expense in 30 years, 30 years. So I just want to make that point because with Board of Finance here, they need to realize that they can push back on you all they want. If we want to keep this town where people like me and other people want to move here, the only way to do it is to provide services for our kids, to provide sports for our kids, to provide other, you know, language, language arts, technology, all those things that all these teachers have presented. We need to keep allowing our kids to do that, because otherwise, our kids are not getting the education that they deserve and need in a town that tout, that we tout ourselves on being one of the best towns in the area. And you look at the numbers, and you look at what we cut, even with middle school sports, everything that I fought for over these last couple of years, how can we say that we are one of the best towns in this area for our students? When you look at this budget, when you look at what we're cutting for our students in terms of education, social, emotional, activities after school, school activities, someone mentioned field trips, $6,000 in the budget last year was for field trips, that's it. $6,000 out of our whole millions and millions dollar budget. That is important to kids as much as education is. So I just wanted to point that out because looking at this, and I've looked at it for hours, and I've looked at the data for cost per student, I've looked at the rankings, and we're not doing well. I just have to say, with this budget and what Finance is asking us to do, it's, it's not going to get us to where we need to be to keep the level that we are as a good school system.
Well said. That is a perfect analogy. You're absolutely right. Somebody said to me a couple of weeks ago, you know, these budgets, and over the last couple of years, it's been like a slow erosion, like, I think there's a word, I hear, a slow erosion of our educational system here in East Line, because budgets are becoming so much tighter, so much tighter, and it's, it's becoming that much more challenging. And if we face an issue or something happens, like we did with the insurance, with the insurance deficit, you know, this year, it's not, it's a wiggle. You know, we build budgets from the ground up. I've always prefaced that from the minute I stepped in East Line, and in the previous district I was in, as a superintendent. We build them from the ground up, and there's no fluff. And that's why we have the workshops, and we collaboratively work through the process and we be transparent, you know, with it. But, but you're right, I mean, you have a small sliver of what we can work with. I mean, you have a small sliver of what we can work with outside of contracts and staffing needs that we can have in place for kids. So well said. Other questions? Yeah, probably.
Hi, I'm Carla Levin. We said we didn't have to identify ourselves, but I thought I would. Some people didn't, you know, he's an odd person talking about the virus. I'm Carla Wyrich. I work at the middle school, I'm the library assistant specialist, and I've been here for 12 years. And I know we're facing a lot of hard choices, but I did just want to just kind of speak on behalf of the library assistant positions, which you don't always talk about in terms of class sizes and things like that, but they really are very impactful jobs for our students. And, you know, I can speak just for the middle school alone. For example, last week, there were members and we checked out 429 books just last week to students. And I'm checking out maybe 15 of those books because I'm teaching all day. We have a flexible schedule at the middle school. And I should add that Eastline has an amazing library program here at K-12 that residents should be incredibly proud of. It's amazing, they're teaching information literacy skills at K-12. And in the day we live in, information literacy skills are incredibly critical for our students to have. And while the libraries are always in teaching, it's our assistants that are doing that really important work of allowing students to have full access to our collections. Of course, at the middle school and high school level, there's a lot more independent use, which is why I say that all those books that we're checking out, which on average are over 16,000 a year just at the middle school, that's all my incredibly wonderful library assistant who's been with me for 11 years and the district pretty good longer. And that's just, it's a lot of legwork. You're checking all those books out, you're giving all those books back, you're repairing as much as you can to save every dollar we can. And I just think, you know, we have this kind of budget, those positions are really, I call them quiet positions because they're very behind the scenes and you're not seeing the impact. And of course, we're always framing this on how does it impact our students? And, you know, that's how it impacts our students. They are correctly connecting with literature all day, every day, so that we can do our important jobs of teaching the students. So I've always been incredibly appreciative of how wonderfully supported the library programs are in Eastline. We're not finding that in surrounding towns. It's unique to our district here. And just as everybody as the board of finance is having these discussions to just consider those impacts of, you know, by all those quiet jobs of the library assistants and how really impactful they are to the day-to-day access that our students have to literature. Thank you.
Thoughts? Yeah, Paul.
I'm thinking the revenue side of things. The sale sends a lot of money to Eastline for aggressive education experience. I don't think the board of ed gets that money. Is that correct?
That's correct. We're right to the tap. So just under 3 million.
Three, that could give sense. Is there some negotiation happening at the town that that might impact us? I know there's probably some contracts or something, but that's one of the processes. Another is, is there some consolidation of equipment that's being used in town, like tractors or drogas or sheds that are coming in the next couple of weeks? Those same things we've got in town? Why can't we use that same equipment that we save for Eastline? And the third is, is there any, you know, is project board looking for space that we can pass that different? So is there any agreements that we can lift, place it up, and answer one? And those are three revenue sources that we know. I, you know, the sale thing is probably political or whatever, but, you know, that's a lot of money that comes down for, we're doing the job, we're not.
Point. Thanks, Paul.
Oh, I'll just get up. Come on. I'm safe, lots of chalk. Hi, I'm Laura Shen Anderson. I'm a parent at Flader School. And I was just, I was looking at the great presentation that you made with class sizes and the teachers. Well, where are parents in this whole thing? And I saw nothing about parents unless you have a separate little column somewhere. Because here's the problem, we can look at those class sizes, we can say, oh, 15 is great, or 20 is great. However, as parents, we're already down numbers. We can't get parents hired in, we can't get parents subs. Our jobs are, we are heading from classroom to classroom. I may be a gentleman in third grade classroom, but this week I had to go to a second grade classroom for half the day because I had a deal with behavior problems in that classroom. So then somebody else had to quickly take my place for a little bit of time, and then I got put back in. So on any given day, as a parent, you could be in a kindergarten classroom, you could be in the first grade classroom, you could be all the way up to fourth grade. And every year changes. So sometimes I get this illusion that someone say, oh, well, the kindergarten parents, who now, they're expendable. We're not just kindergarten parents because I could go to kindergarten next year. I've got like 30 years' experience, so I'm not just like in there cutting. We're not just cutting, we're not doing that. We facilitate the education of children all day long. There's our IEDs, our 504s, any other student in there that needs it. And anytime a teacher needs help, we're helping. I may go to another third grade classroom just to help off a little bit. So what I feel, and quite frankly, to let you know, if you look at our salaries, our salaries are the lowest. We are the bottom of the barrel. I could go to Costco and make more money than I've worked here for eight years. So it's not that I'm in here for the money, though I like my little tiny raise, but I do think as I take pride, so does everybody else, on what you're doing right now, because you are moralizing us because when you're saying you're going to take five parents away and we are already stressed out, it is really difficult to do our job. So where are our parents? Just...
Yeah, good point, Laura. Laura, you know, Chris, you're sitting right here. Been here a number of years. Chris, Deb, I'm not sure, it's been here longer, but...
Twenty, forty between us.
Forty years between, exactly. So you've seen a lot of that. Yeah, we try to keep this short to, it's only an hour to show more time, or maybe more time for questions and comments. But we have, can four students that are leaving next year right now, correct? So there's such turnover, we have more than close to 130 parents, that there's room where people aren't going to lose jobs. That's always a, always the goal, to try to keep everybody in a position, it might not be the same position, but to keep jobs. So with four students leaving and the five reductions, there's room now in July, new student could move in. There's that, it's a revolving door. Sometimes there's a need, if there's a need, we look to bring somebody around or hire somebody new. But we felt that as part of the reduction process of trying to get that 10.3 down, we looked at five parent positions and general led parent positions across the entire district. And I know that's not, yeah. We have no idea, Chris, because I can tell you right now, it's going to be a boom, boom, and this will, that will, and then it can change in two weeks, it can change in two months. No idea, four kids are now leaving, that could change to six, that could change to two. So it's just, it's a moving target. That's the market. And the greatest key reason, we felt, you know, as part of this process, it could be five reductions. Again, that's a variable of this, you know, that's what we're looking to do. Other thoughts, questions, ideas? Yeah, yeah. There, Chris, you have a mic. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Pat Deskey. I'm the secretary of lead-in.
Thank you, George, Deb, I'm sorry.
I just have a question from the library division of high school. I know they came early and they opened the library to students and what I hear is pretty busy first thing in the morning, a lot of students coming, leadership homework or online maybe, or some touch base. And the library does come to later. So with no one there, the library is here and they're coming out with the loss of the students, along with trying to get subs for the library or even sort of a classroom creation on the high school, that's just, and now it's just this year. So library days have been supervised by students since, I want to say, two, three years now? This is 2020. Since 2020. And I just support one of the libraries and they have no library days because of those libraries hoping out to watch. What's going to happen if these libraries, if the libraries are out sick or and working out or just out there? The library is going to come to days.
No, you'd have to, you'd have to change the structure of how the library operates. You could move MTSS programs into the corners of the library or some certified staff that are available to keep the space open when the library, as far as not in there. You could move study all that here or in the morning, first thing, maybe students coming here, they don't work wide. So you'd have to do breaks, we'd have to look at the options that we have and work with, what we would have if those changes. Not ideally by any way, should we? Yeah, but you'd have to, you'd have to make adjustments.
There are those access to all the available resources of library.
Potentially, yeah, potentially. You come back.
The only thing I wanted to add is today we had seven classes with no syllabus that we were watching. If we had MTSS in the library, that MTSS teacher is trying to focus on the students that are assigned to MTSS, not on behavior of seven classes that are in the room. So those students that are hoping for a leg up or some clarity in whatever classes they're working for are not going to be able to get it from their MTSS teacher. So it's a, it's a lose-lose for our kids.
Yeah, if I don't disagree with you, Chris, it's, it's an issue. And I'm not saying MTSS, one ideal example, but could be others. You're right. You know, it's giving up sort of thing or forced to give up. That's something we don't want to do. I totally agree with you.
The other thing I wanted to mention was the amount of book read here and book collection that all library ages do in the schools could save, it's worth tens of thousands of dollars every year. My letter here, thousands of books a year. And students, white students, we track down legally to return books. If you had to replace all those books that were returned or that were retired, it'd be a hundred and thousands of dollars annually.
Good job, Laura, for sure. Third.
I'm Jordan Warren. I just have a question. I know I've been watching the meetings on Zoom and I know this was already brought up, but I was just curious about the, what the percentage of the increase, like what it translates to, like for people with their taxes and stuff like that. I know a lot of people that's what they're afraid of, people that don't have kids in these schools, they're wondering, you know, oh my gosh, my taxes are going to go up if this crazy school budget goes through. How much does it translate to? Is it like 20 bucks or is it like a thousand? I don't...
Great, great question. And then you were, you were at our, this was a senior board job in here, but the board job, this was a thank you for being part of it. I'll remember you there. That's a good question. I don't know that right now. There's where the town is looking, how much revenue comes in to help to just watch that increases. We don't have, really don't have that number to issue, right?
The board of finance should have that number, right? I mean, the board should have that, we know what the value of the number is, right?
What, I can pull on your mic, can you say that?
I said, the board of finance should be able to get that number easily. They know how many dollars come in, how much we need to get that, that big gap, and divide it up. I mean, again, there's people in finance that, that's what they do, they're accountants. So that number should be relatively easy to get, or at least a ballpark. I said 20,000, 3,000, 10,000, 8,000.
That's something we can, we can talk about.
I just want to explain, I was just saying, like that, that's in mind. Oops. So just quickly to explain that the board of finance and the board of selectmen do have the grand list numbers now. They're working through their process as far as what they're going to appropriate and then obviously we're going to meet with them. So once they get their revenue estimate placed, then yes, they could give you that number. It's just a little too early right now.
But why?
Yes, we did.
No, you did request.
We did request it. We got the revenue information, but we don't have the town expense side. So in order to truly calculate what the impact is, we have to consider the entire budget, not just our side ones.
Hi, Anne Chappell of the board of selectmen. So actually, tonight, I came to this meeting so I could hear what people were saying. The board of selectmen is meeting tonight. So what we do, just so you understand, there's the board of education and then there's the town departments. So we have to meet with each town department and we get their expenses and how they want to hire new people and the town needs to repair things. So there's a whole nother budget that we deal with. So besides the board of education, there's also the town budget. So these budget discussions that we're reviewing, the department heads are starting tonight. We'll be going for the next few weeks through those. So that's, so we really don't know at this point where we stand for the town.
Thanks.
Nice to ask you a question. So I understand that, but if we just want to look at education alone and what your proposed budget is for however many, you said 1% is 500,000, right, roughly?
Yeah, 504,000.
Okay, so 500 could be whatever. So you're, we're saying 10% versus 5%. Is that the difference or what they're cutting you? I don't know. So we're talking a couple of million, right? So we could just say, take all the other ones out. If you just look at taking our budget, what is it per person? I understand you have to factor all that in, but we could say, if we just take all the other ones out of the picture, look at education, we want to keep the education, and we're asking just for the town, they should be able to say, if we just raised education and kept everything else the same, what would it be per person? And that number should be able to become, in my opinion, because they have, they know what they come in. We divided up roughly, someone can do the numbers figure out. I agree, you have to look at all of it, but if we just wanted the number of what it would be if we just looked at education, someone in the town should be able to get us that data. Because that data is very valuable, as this woman over here pointed out. And I agree, they have to look at everything, but we have to look at it just from like what it would be if we just looked at education alone and what that would extrapolate to. And then factor it all, but at least you guys should have that data, in my opinion.
So I just want to make sure I've understood what you said. So obviously, we have our budget, which we haven't finalized yet, and the rest of the town has their budgets that they haven't finalized yet as well. So we're, you know, just moving parts.
Yes.
What I'd ask you to know is if we look at the revenue that's coming in this year compared to the revenue that we generated last year, we should know that we have 5% less, 2% more. And then we'll, then we would know roughly, or we're going with those other, whether, you know, let's say, for example, we had exactly the same revenue that we had as last year, then we would know that this is going to represent some amount of income, so we could calculate. If there was no additional, if there is additional revenue, then this, then you're deciding, you know, that additional revenue, the town really needs it because the beaches got wiped out this winter, whatever it is, we decide to spend it. But the point is, we should know, you know, it would be helpful to know at some point, I think people want to know the number, is okay, the town brought in X amount more, you know, this part of the town needs this because of these needs, and we decided to eat that, that needs that is going to represent X dollars. Because that's, that's what I think most people want to know is, you know, can we keep what we have and what's it going to cost to do it, right? You know, because we're, we're working really hard to, to make difficult decisions, but we don't know whether that's actually going to impact anybody's taxes. So we're making a difficult decision that may not have any impact on anyone. So, yeah, so we can correct.
We will get to the point where we can do that, but it's more than just the revenues that are coming in from the grand list. We also have capital financing. We've got a payment of one of our debt issuances that's coming due. So there's, there's a whole lot of different things that have to take place before we can say this is what is going to be the impact of just, now, we're getting closer to that, you know, but we need to work through some of these numbers because it's not, it's not simple to just say, here's what it is. There are a number of decisions that have to go into it. For example, we all...
For example, we also are going to look at what do we need to have in our undesigned fund balance? Because that's a number that it's very important to try to keep increasing that dollar amount because that has an impact on the rest of the Town. If we can get an undesigned fund balance up to 15%, then our rating agencies look at us and say, that, you know, is healthy, can they do that year after year? If so, maybe we can get our debt ratings increased. And when our debt ratings are increased, then our cost to borrow is down. The Town borrows a lot of money. When I look at the factors that go into how healthy of a community we are, one of the measures that really drag us down in our fiscal health is how much debt we have. So I understand the point of your question, but we really have to focus on some of those other things that the Town has to do before we can get to that exact number. And, and we're getting close to that. And then as part of, and I know we talked about the timeline, but as part of the Town meeting, we walk through, this is what it will be if you have a house that, you know, has an assessed value of 400,000, this is what a mill rate increase will do to your taxes. And that's all part of our presentation, but until we can finalize some of these other, you know, how much are we going to borrow this year, how much are we going to get from, there's still a lot of numbers that are up in the air with the Governor's Budget. We're seeing things like, you know, this is kind of the crazy time where they put out, they say they're cutting the ECS, they're cutting this, they're cutting that, and then you get a bunch of bills that adds back in. So we just don't know a lot of those revenue numbers yet. So I, I understand completely how important that is to you, and as soon as things coalesce a little bit more, I'm sure, you know, we'll be working with the Board of Ed to try to fine tune that. But, you know, the, the Governor's Budget just was out last meeting, and, and so we're still trying to figure out how much of our grant is, is getting cut.
I guess it just, as Bill points out, it makes it difficult for them to even start to try and formulate a budget, they've been doing it for four months. You know, if the timeframe isn't matching, it's hard to even try to formulate a budget if we don't know, as Bill pointed out, what we're doing.
And, and, you know, Jeff and I have talked about this, it's just, this is an incredibly long budget process. It's like six months out of the year. So it's painful for everyone.
I would agree.
Yes. So, and I should have introduced myself to me, so Chair of the Board of Finance. So I think, you know, again, when you think about the budget and what it does to your taxes, last year was a really difficult year to talk about what would this increase and spend it to, to your taxes, because we also had the whole rebound project that went on. And so that's the state mandate, every five years, everything is reevaluated. And so our mill rate came down last year because our grand list had risen, and we looked at all, all the different rates that people's homes increased. And you also had a shift, so a lot of commercial properties fell in value, a lot of the residential properties around the beach, the way up was everybody, you know, was buying up properties to work from home. So we had that whole shift going on too. So those are some of the, like, the nuances that go into trying to figure out, how is this going to affect your taxes? So, you know, last year was incredibly difficult to try to walk through that with everybody because they were seeing our assessments go up, we were seeing a shift from commercial to residential, and then, you know, the, the rise of the grant. So there's a, there's a lot of, a lot of factors that go into it. So we will hopefully get clarity on a lot of those over, over the next couple of weeks. The Board of Finance will receive the budget on March 8th, from March 8th through, you know, a good part of April. We in turn will be meeting with all of the departments at the Town, with the Board of Ed, going through our capital financing plan, a lot of capital non-recurring expenditures that we want to do. And then, as we see the timeline, the opening day before, we get to actually draft the budget. But as soon as we feel a little bit more comfortable with some of the revenue from the State and everything else, then, you know, we'll hopefully come back and say, this would be the impact on our taxes.
Thank you, thanks, appreciate it. It's almost over class, we have to end this meeting, people are going to be on Zoom, so we get our Board of Education into the next meeting, so we can start on time. Thank you for coming out. As I stated earlier, if you have questions, other questions, feel free to email, talk to us, staff members, my office hours, anytime. So thanks for being here.